I appreciate it.
Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board's secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this Board, and this meeting is being recorded by APTV, and I ask everyone with a cell phone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting. Okay, roll call.
Wendy Glassman is absent this evening. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Natalie Passerini.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right, just a quick housekeeping issue. I will make a motion to approve the resolution of 1118 Summerfield Avenue. A second.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully.
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Yes. All right, so we're going to have an executive session. I'll read the resolution into the minutes. Whereas NJS 2:4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting of the Board in certain circumstances, and whereas the Board hereby moves to close the public hearing and convene in closed executive session in order to discuss staff appointments for 2025 pursuant to NJS 2:4-12B8, which is permitted by the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, and whereas it is anticipated at this time that the above matter will be made public at the conclusion of the discussions between the Board and the members of the Board staff. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment that will hereby close the public portion of this meeting in order to convene in private executive session for the reasons set forth above, I make a motion to adopt the foregoing resolution.
Second.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Natalie Passerini.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully.
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni.
Yes. All right, we'll be back. If we can get back to order, everybody.
Sure, I will now take roll call. Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Natalie Passerini.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right, so we have two applications tonight, one that we've heard prior, 1206 Comstock Street. Mr. Hirsch, welcome back. Happy holidays.
Thank you, same to you and the Board.
And could you give us a quick synopsis of where we were and where we are now?
I will. At the first meeting, we presented testimony, Mr. Buletza, as the site engineer. He went through a lot of the testimony as to the variances related to the setbacks indicating distances of surrounding homes, surrounding properties. You know, we don't intend to repeat any of that tonight, most of the Board has a question about it. Thought that was pretty clear, hopefully persuasive. After going through that, we had our architect begin to testify, but the Board had concerns about the elevations of the home essentially, on the requirements under the design, requirements under the ordinance. There was several not met, some met. There was some discussion about the application previously approved in that architecture in comparison, et cetera. So we took that as the Board's having strong feelings about the architecture, so we carried the application to go back to the drawing board. And the architect has worked very hard with the applicant, and you've seen, I guess, the new plans, we're going to go through them tonight, of course, but the major change being the full front porch, instead of before, you may recall, it was flush with the house, a portion of the front porch, so to speak.
We appreciate the changes you have made, Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you.
You and your applicant.
Thank you. There was also several other changes to meet suggestions by the Board or the Board engineers report. The dwelling now, which was at six feet, the facade of the house, is now at 11 feet. The coverage, building coverage, went from 46.6 to 44.8. The driveway was extended to be seven feet from the rear property line, as requested. There were some other technical items, such as the removal of the gate in front of the driveway. That was all done. And a few of the other technical engineering matters concerning drainage and so on and so forth, which have been filed and have been submitted, so Mr. Frida, I think, was satisfied. But if he has any comments, I'm sure we're going to hear from Mr. Frida. So what I'd like to, how I would like to proceed tonight, well, I think the architecture is obviously, from the last meeting, a critical element. I'd like Mr. Buletza to cover essentially three items that are in the planner's report that shouldn't take very long, hopefully very concisely. But there was questions asked by the planner, you know, about fence lighting and a couple of other things. So I just want Mr. Buletza to cover those, and then we will bring up the architect to go through the new architectural plan that you've seen, and our planner will get elected.
Sounds like a plan.
Thanks.
For the record, Natalie Passerini was not in attendance at the last meeting. She is tonight, and she advised me that she did review the hearing tape on the 22nd, so she will be eligible not only to participate in the vote, but as well, and I will get a certification for it to sign. Is that correct, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you for that. All right, I appreciate it.
John is your first witness?
Yes, I recall him.
All right, John, please raise your hand. I always re swear, when you sign a swear affirm, put the testimony about to give this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Just state your name for the record and spell it.
John Buletza, B-U-L-E-T-Z-A.
Okay, and Mr. Hirsch, before you proceed, my staff's one end, please raise your hands. Sign the swear affirm, testimony about to give this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name for the record and your authority issue with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Jerry Frida, Board Engineer.
Thank you. Okay, those are yours.
Thank you, yeah. All right. John, as I said, you submitted revised plans, as I've indicated, so the Board and Mr. Frida would have had a chance to review those from an engineering perspective.
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. There was three issues raised, I think, in the planner's report that I wanted you to touch base on. One, which I mentioned, was the extension of the driveway that the Board had mentioned because variants were the cars essentially being parked in the front yard because they were forward of the house. So there's suggestion we had more room in the backyard to extend the driveway, and the plan was done to reflect that. So that was, well, these three items are from the latest planner's letter dated November 21st, 2024. The first item is on page six, number 3.5, about the driveway. The ribbon driveway was extended three feet towards the east. It now terminates seven feet from the eastern property line. Therefore, using a parking space size of eight and a half feet by 18 feet, which specifies minimum parking space size ordinance section 3059.12B.1, this will allow two cars to park to the north, on the north side of the residence, in the ribbon driveway. And the front car, the front of that parking spot would be one foot to the east of the new front porch, so almost even with the new front porch, but one foot to the east. And also, that would be four feet to the west of the actual building, to five-foot front porch. So just quickly, this increased the proposed lot coverage from 50.6% to 50.9%. However, it's, the lot coverage is still less than the maximum permitted by, of the maximum of 65% permitted by 14.1%. All right. The second one, comment that I want you to address is paragraph 3.7 of the planner's report, indicating that the fence that we've shown, that we did not, and that provided all the information in terms of the details, location where the fence height changes from six feet to four feet on the northerly and southerly property lines, and the dimensioning required one foot setbacks. And that's on page six of the planner letter, item number 3.7. We have two different styles of the proposed fence. One's four-foot-high open picket fence. Another one is a six-foot-high solid vinyl fence. And I'm going to briefly explain what the proposal is, and these are shown on sheet three of the plans. The fence is in red and the fence text is in red, so if you want to zero in on that. So starting at the northwestern property line, we're proposing 25 feet to the east, a four-foot-high open picket fence to basically the end of the first parking spot. At that point, the fence switches to a six-foot solid vinyl fence to the eastern property line. The six-foot solid vinyl fence continues along the eastern property line to the alley right-of-way, and then it switches back to the four-foot open, four-foot-high open picket fence along the alley right-of-way for 55 feet to Comstock Street, and it stays four-foot open picket for another 36 feet to an open picket gate, to a corner at the front of the building, and it finally, about six feet, ends at the corner, the north corner of the front porch. That's our proposal at this time.
So just to clarify, the, along the alley, the length of the alley, is going to be all four-foot open fence?
Correct. Approximately 50 linear feet.
50, okay. And then, I believe I had another comment about fencing. So along the front property line, which will be the west, that needs to be at least one foot off the property line?
Yes.
So make sure that complies?
Yes.
Okay. And then, back to the driveway, I'm sorry, how many feet did you say in front of the house? Four feet? The car would stick out?
In front of the facade. Correct. Even with the front porch.
The building line.
With the facade.
So that's four feet. Okay. And then, do you have an objection to putting something at the easterly end to prevent people from driving off the ribbons into what's left of the?
We'll comply with that. We'll put the wheel stop that you asked for, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
The next one I wanted to address, Don, if you're done, is with the lighting comment in your plan, in your report. Okay, last one. 3.11, 3.11. Very quickly, page seven, number 3.11, lighting. We will provide an image of the proposed conlight and revise the note on the detail sheet to state that two locations for the lights are required, not three. There used to be a light on the center of the second floor porch and the first floor porch, and one at the northern sliding glass windows, but since the second floor porch is gone, there's only two locations. I neglected to update that on the detail, so we'll do that. All right. That's the, there's a couple of architectural comments in the planner's report, which we'll address for the architect.
By the way, John, what are you testifying from? This is a revised plan.
This is the plan that I had submitted.
Yeah, give me your last revision date.
Yeah, that was after the last meeting.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just need to reference it.
Sure. Understood.
If I could, one comment. There's the side entrance where the stairs are. Since you're well under your lot coverage calculation, would you consider running the concrete slab out to, from the step, out to the ribbon?
We could. We'd ask for a caveat or waiver, design waiver, because we're only about nine square feet under the 1,000 square feet of added impervious area, and if we do that, we'll trigger that more than 1,000 square feet, thereby actually making the development what's called minor development. Now, it does not even meet the threshold of minor because we're at about 900, let's say 990 square feet. It's not going to make much difference from stormwater runoff, so we'd be happy to do that.
So if the Board would like to see that, it would just give someplace to walk from the cars, not all the cars, but at least the car parked towards the front, into the house without walking through the grass. And I didn't realize why you hadn't done that in the first place.
So coupled with a different comment in the planner letter, which asks for a three-foot level area of refuge outside of the sliding glass doors prior to the steps, we'll add that, and then we'll put a concrete pad out to the driveway, straight out. It's only a few square feet.
Yeah, it's not a lot. It's five feet wide, the stairs, and you're talking, what, maybe eight feet to? I don't have the scale on it. About eight feet?
I have a dimension. It's about eight. It's less than that. It's 6.2 feet from the house, so it's about seven feet from the house. It would be about five feet.
Right. So it'd be 25 square feet of concrete, which, practicality, it makes a lot of sense to put that in.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Jerry. Just to clarify, Mr. Buletza, the downspouts will collect, the water will be collected from the downspouts, and the water will be exiting towards Comstock?
Yes. Sheet four, the grading plan, it has the downspout locations. They, the downspouts on the north side of the house, they have about a 2% grade toward Comstock Street, and also on the east side, they head toward the alley. All the runoff goes towards the right-of-way, and there's no additional runoff to any adjacent properties.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Good value, Jerry.
Yes.
Okay. Any other further questions for Mr. Buletza?
I just, I have a question. Can you just cover the fence one more time? Is there a fence across the front of the property, across the front of the property?
Yes.
And how far off of the sidewalk is that?
Um.
Because the house is only, what is it, on 11 feet?
Yes. The house is 11 feet and the front porch is six feet from the property line, sorry, five feet.
Is the fence necessary in the front of the house?
The applicant had wanted a fenced. There is a four-foot-wide sidewalk and about four feet to the property line, another foot to the fence. The front of the fence along Comstock Street is 36 feet from the corner of the alley up to the corner of the house, and then another six feet roughly from Comstock Street to the corner of the porch. The property line.
It's about, it's about four and a half feet from the sidewalk.
Yeah. It just makes the front yard even smaller?
Makes it appear smaller.
It makes it feel closed in? Just sharing my thoughts.
I tend to agree with Ms. Potter. I've looked at houses with similar designs to which on my street on Ridge Avenue, and if you would have put a fence there, it would look tight. You don't have enough space to make it tight, it gives a more, a cleaner look. And what purpose does the fence serve? Four-foot fence.
That's a good question, because it doesn't enclose the entire property.
Correct.
My dog still go around.
And they have the backyard totally enclosed. And on your plans that we have provided, it doesn't have it, and it looks, it just looks clean?
It's not depicted in your rendering.
In the rendering.
In the rendering.
In the rendering, sorry, my bad.
Yeah.
You can find two other ones right down the street.
Yep, right across the street. There's a similar layout without it.
Understood. All right, we'll take that under advisement right now until we hear from the other test. I know there was a gate on the driveway that was removed, and that was the comment, we recall that comment at the last meeting, but we'll take that under advisement. Thank you. And there is one gate at the front walkway in that fence we're talking about removing? At the, at the front walk?
The removal of the fence would also make it much easier to cut the grass.
Yeah.
And remove the snow.
Agreed. That's all I have for Mr. Buletza.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Buletza on the Board? Board professionals, any further questions?
I just want to confirm, because I apologize that I wasn't at the first meeting, and this did not come up in the notes from Michael, but is, are all of the utilities going to be underground serving the house?
Say that again.
Are all of the utilities serving the house going to be underground?
All of them, and there's an option on the electric. On, I believe, there's an option on the electric. Let me just take a look at sheet four. Yes, they're all underground, except we're showing a proposed overhead or underground electric telephone and cable TV service lines. From the utility pole, it's about 10 feet from the corner of the building, right there.
And have you or your client had any conversations yet preliminarily with JCP&L? I mean, there's a service line that runs across the property to the house on Fifth. Is that going to be problematic for construction? Is it, it's close to, you know, where the edge of the house is going to be?
There is a, there's an overhead utility line from that same telephone pole.
Right.
And we have a note on the demolition plan. The wire goes from the pole at the alley to the house to the north. And we have a note on the demolition plan that says relocate wires away from Lot 11 as required for construction, Lot 11 being power lot.
But we don't know what that means, really, physically, relocate.
Well, they could, they could put another pole in, relocate the alignment, they could go underground, they could come from a different transformer, it's up to JCP&L, if required. We don't know if it's required.
Are there any other houses on the street with underground electric?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Are there any other houses on the street with underground electric?
I don't know. I'm showing a lot of overhead electric on our plan, even in the vicinity. There's one coming across the alley. I believe the lot to the north does have overhead as well.
Yeah, it's coming from the alley, from that pole that's on the corner of your property. So, you know, it's one of those things, we don't have a whole lot of control over as the Board, but, you know, in an effort to not have excess overhead wires and conflicting things on people's property, I don't know, I just, I would recommend that they work with JCP&L to, you know, try and minimize the overhead crossing on their property to the extent that they can.
Well, it only makes sense from what you, you know.
I mean, just like when we had on Grant.
Right, right, and we had the same issue with Grant.
You know, God forbid these people want to do something in the future, and, or the people on the corner.
A conversation should at least be had with JCP&L. I think Donna's made a good point. I mean, we can't require you to do that, but it sounds like a good idea.
I mean, what can I suggest at this time, you know, except that we will discuss with JCP&L those alternatives to the extent they can reasonably be accommodated. Obviously, we have no problem with trying to cooperate with that.
I don't think you really want an electrical, a hot wire above the house or anywhere getting close to the house that's being built, right?
JCP&L is, well, how could I put it?
We're on TV.
They own blanket easements for their wires over the properties, so if their foreman doesn't think that the line should be moved or the pole should be moved, they'll say they'll move it sometimes, but they'll give you a high price.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Buletza, but I think it has been discussed prior developments.
Yeah.
They've had discussions with JCP&L.
We'll be happy to talk to them, sure. Yeah, moving poles is.
I mean, we're having to help you Strongarm them if we can, but I think every single person on the Board probably has some sort of, at least tangential experience, but somebody else's wires on your property, right?
Well, in this town, everything is right next to each other, so.
Well, no, when I lived on Fourth, they had the power lines that ran through the backyards in my block, so, yeah.
We just didn't want to get into moving utility poles, which probably take a year and a half to get it done, and it gets very, very expensive. You know, actually, as long as it doesn't involve some of that, we're happy to work on any way we can reasonably.
You've vindicated, we'll just discuss it with them.
Yes, we'll discuss it with them, and as I said, any reasonable accommodation we can make, I don't, I can't speak for the client saying it's going to cost you $10,000 to move a pole, it'll take a year and a half.
I think the plan's been covered.
No, I agree. Any further questions for Mr. Buletza? Board professionals, anything further?
No.
All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the public for Mr. Buletza, specifically his testimony tonight? If you do have questions, please go to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Spencer. I live at 1018 Fifth Avenue. I'm the neighbor that you see on the plan right over there.
Spencer, what's your full name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Spencer Pelis. I'm a homeowner and resident at the house behind. I didn't receive a notice about the first variance meeting, otherwise I would have been there as well. I come discussing, my brother owns that house with me, my mom owns the house next door, and we come kind of discussing grievances of just, well, I shouldn't say grievances, concerns of just a house.
Okay, so this is not a grievance. This is about, this is about any questions you have for Mr. Buletza, specific to his testimony right now. You can comment all you like at the end, but right now, it's just questions for Mr. Buletza.
Understood. How much space between the house and my property would there be? Because I know the plan that I saw was originally three feet. Is that still standing?
Which is this?
Can you clarify which property?
Sure, I'm sorry, the 1018 Fifth, which is the north. Sure, I'm sorry, the 1018 Fifth, which is the north, the north side. Sure.
Corner house.
Uh, the one next to it, actually. That would be the corner of Fifth and Comstock, so that would be right here. So pretty much like where would this be standing? This is my yard and how much space off of your property line would the house be?
Eighteen point seven feet for the plan.
What was that? What did you say, Donna?
Just over 18 feet.
And we did cover those setbacks at the last hearing, but I understand.
Okay, and how tall does the house stand? Two and a half stories? Was it? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public for Mr. Bilezza? Thank you, Mr. Bilezza.
Thank you.
Call your next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Call our architect back to the stands.
Okay.
Pietro Rosato.
I do.
Do you state your name for the record and spell it?
Yes, Pietro Rosato.
Set. All right. All right, so Pietro, obviously there's a new plan substantially different from the plan that was before the board at the last hearing. And you have on the board rendering of that house, which has been submitted to the board. I know that you need to mark that as a separate exhibit.
Yeah, if it's something new, let's mark it.
Well, it's been filed with the board.
If you're going to testify for it, I'd like to.
Yeah, sure.
Sure. A4? Thank you.
For the record, we just marked it, exhibit A4. Explain so the record's clear as to what A4 is.
It's a rendering of the front and the side of the, of the structure that we're proposing.
All right, before I get into going through the architecture with you and the floor plans, there was a couple of questions raised in the planner's report I wanted to, wanted you to address. The planner's report noted that based on the changes, no design exceptions are required from section 30 dash 64.4 now. It discusses a lot of detail at the prior hearing. However, she does note that the design of the eaves and roof overhang is not consistent with traditional proportions, requesting the roof should overhang the porch columns rather than terminating at the top of the column. Would you address that?
Yes, so we are actually proposing to extend the eve in the front and possibly a little bit on the side, actually with the porch, a little overhang on the side a little bit.
How deep is the porch?
Five feet.
Five feet.
But in the front, we're actually going to, it's not depicted in the rendering, but we're going to include a dropped beam, which is architecturally correct and extended.
How, how far will you extend it?
About 16 inches. Yeah, that's, that's a good amount.
Especially with that exposure to the south, they'll get better shading and.
And also because we don't have so much yard in the front, that 16 inches, it's, it's a good amount.
No, but for your style house too, you don't want that, they're not. It's not appropriate for the really long eaves with the brackets.
Thank you. The second comment before you get into the floor plan and your drawing, that was the issue about the fireplace, the gas-fired fireplace, which I guess would be, you know, vented, would be to the rear. So would you just explain it? When it's vented, how far it's vented out, et cetera?
It's a direct vent out to the rear as, as you've explained. And it, it would only project out about maybe less than six inches into the rear yard, okay? So that's, that's the extent to answer your question and your comment.
All right, now, obviously, there was a lot of discussion at the prior meeting, especially about changing the facade of the house, the elevations concerning the front porch. So why don't you start just with what changes were made from the last plan to the exterior in terms of elevations, et cetera, and then we'll get into the interior.
Yeah, so the main, the main, as you could tell from the rendering office, it's clear, fairly clear. We just eliminated the bump out that was in the front with the gable facing Comstock. And we just included a front porch. That's the landfill of the house, the entire landfill of the house, and it's five foot deep. We also raised, you know, the porch and included the steps that you guys had commented on. So with the railing in the front, railing at the porch and that's.
All right, now, just go through, if you will, the layout of the first, second floors so we can just have, down on the record exactly how it's set up.
So, so we, on the first floor, as you walk up on the porch, the main entrance is right in the front in the center of the house. First floor level is approximately 1,082 square feet. And you enter right into a dining room space, which is open to the kitchen and living room slash family room area. We also have stairs onto the left side of the house and a new study with a powder room right in the center of the, of the plan.
We talked about these entrance, porch or whatever before, right with the putting a landing in and the cement that Mr. Frida brought up would be on that side of the.
Yeah, so from the family, from the family room, you, we do have this new fireplace, which is direct vented. And we do have these French doors going onto a landing and then steps going onto the side of, onto the driveway.
All right, and then.
Which actually would address the engineers' comments that he had. I think that would, that would work.
Yeah, the plan would have to be consistent, yes.
Yes, that's, that's correct, yeah.
I think that is a code requirement for that landing to be there.
Yes, because it's more than two steps.
All right, and going from the first floor to the second floor?
On the sec, onto the second floor, as you walk up the stairs, you have a washer and dryer laundry closet. You have a master bedroom suite with a master bathroom and a walk-in closet on the, on the front portion of the front of the house. And you have two bedrooms on, on the back, the inner bedroom, bathroom in the middle.
All right, and, sorry, half-story in this house?
Yes, there is a half-story. And the half-story includes a bedroom and a one-fold bathroom.
All right. And what's the proposed materials?
The full material is clapboard vinyl siding, vinyl fired windows. We also have PVC trim at the corner boards, freeze boards and around the windows and doors. We have composite railing at the porch and composite deck material. We have asphalt roof shingles at the roof and aluminum gutters and levers.
Can you talk a bit about, I'm sorry, can you talk a bit about the foundation and crawl space and what's going on underneath the first floor a bit?
The foundation is, it's a crawl space. It's about two feet high or.
And where's the access to that?
The access, it's, it's through, I believe in the side, we have access panels to the side to access it. That's, that's all you need. It's, we're going to obviously.
Where are you putting your mechanicals?
Mechanicals, the engineer actually has some mechanical, the plan is showing it in his plans. Chemicals are in the northeast corner of the house, about five feet from the battery line, showing on sheet four. I believe it's right next to the steps. Side of the steps that we're proposing.
That's where the HVAC, HVAC is going. Where's the furnace going?
The furnace, not too sure, but we're, oh, it's in the attic. I'm sure it's, it's going to be in the attic space, or part of it at least.
Can we get a definitive answer on that?
Yes, attic.
Attic. Going once, going twice.
All right, so essentially now, before we went through a lot of photographs of the nature, the character of the neighborhood, the types of homes and architecture, which obviously the board is extremely familiar with, the board had their comments. In your opinion, now, does this proposed architectural design fit in with the character of the neighborhood?
We believe it does, no. We've, we've tried to take all of the comments from last time into consideration and, you know, the front porch. We eliminated that bump out. I think that that was a major move in the design aesthetics and the architecture of the, of the, of the house and the neighboring property. So we've increased the front yard, you know, from six feet at the bump out before, and now it's 11 feet. So the front, actual front facade of the house, it's 11 feet. So it gives a little bit more free space in a way in the front as a geometry, as a, as a larger geometry, so.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have right now.
Vapor barrier going to be under the entire, I mean, the vapor, I'm sorry, the crawl space under the entire house, right?
Yes.
Is there any toilet vapor barrier for condensation coming up in?
Yes.
And what would that vapor barrier be made of?
Vapor barrier?
Yeah.
It's going to be a plastic vapor barrier. We're going to do a, probably a four-inch concrete on top of that as well. It's called a rat slide, so that's what it's called. So, so that's what it's, on top of the vapor barrier, obviously we welded wire fabric and so on.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Rosato? No? Board professionals, any questions?
No.
Just to confirm, no second floor, Dr. B.
No. That was just a rapid error from last time, sorry.
All right, I'll open it up to the public for Mr. Rosato. Anybody in the public who would like to question Mr. Rosato's testimony? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Call the last witness or planner.
Okay.
John Tykeenett. Sir, the solace we are affirmed, the testimony is about goodness, matter of truth, no truth and nothing about the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it.
My name is John Tykeenett. T is Thomas, A I K is Kelly, I N A. I'm a licensed planner understate in New Jersey. I have been since like completed my studies at Rutgers University in 1992. I've spent the majority of my 32-year career doing this, testifying for applicants before boards throughout New Jersey, about 180 of them so far. I've never been.
Thank you, we accept your credentials, Mr. Tykeenett.
Thank you. My license is current and in good standing. It was renewed on May 7th, which I was asked last month what the date was.
I didn't get to ask any questions, any.
I'm sorry, Tom. They seem to be ready to listen quickly. I don't know, that could be me.
So you, your firm has been retained to provide planning testimony to support this application tonight, correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with the property in question?
Yes, I am.
And would you explain to the board what else you've done in terms of preparing yourself to provide opinion and testimony concerning the application?
So I had the opportunity to review the plans or review the notes from last meeting as well as your ordinance and master plan as all the review letters. So the best thing about this application coming to the end is I, I think it's very, very clear that the applicant listened very, very well to the concerns of the board and that, you know, the boards are the ones that know the town's the best. And I know in every, all the case law that you read, that's the first thing you see, is the judges defer to the boards because you know your community's best. And I think the applicant did an outstanding job of listening to the board and making sure that we ended up with a home here that is harmonious with the neighborhood. We do need a couple of variances, one for front yard setback, 11 feet or 25 feet is required for maximum building coverage, 44.8% where 30% is required. We also had previously granted variances for undersized lot, et cetera. I'm not going to rehash the, you know, the case law with Domir. I'm sure we did all the buy, sell, all that good stuff, try to make sure that, you know, all the steps for an isolated undersized lot were taken care of in the 2018 approval and they carry forward to tonight. And again, I think the house is, is appropriately sighted on the lot, being closer to the lane, consistent with the driveways that are along the lane as well as the house across the lane. We're kind of, kind of splitting the difference, if you will, between our neighbors. We have a neighbor to the south who's about six feet setback from Comstock. Our neighbor to the north is about 13 feet. So we're coming in in the middle there at 11, again, providing for a, a nice balance. Likewise, even with the fence, I think with our, with our conforming four-foot picket fence, that's really continuing Mr. Pell's fence from the north. So he has an attractive white picket fence that comes down from the north and we wanted to continue that along our frontage. Again, really setting forward what is a conforming and very attractive look. The balance of the fences on the block are either non-conforming or chain link. So I think, again, setting that standard for that, for the, for that block and for the neighborhood, I think is, is a very good thing in terms of advancing the harmony and really continuing, Mr. Pell's property, the north is lovely. I think picking up elements of that, continuing it to the south really is, is a good design element. Then in terms of design, design exceptions, we do need an exception for the location of the parking where we do project, as we said, that four feet into the front yard. But we did push it back as far as we can. Again, some of that is a function of the lot. And again, that, the standard there is that it's impractical for the applicant to fit 36 feet of parking into 50 feet of lot with setbacks, et cetera. So we've done the best we can. Further compliance would be impractical. So we think that it is, we think that it, always got to wait for the second one.
Don't let that deter you.
It depends. It's quite pleasant to make you stop, we won't let you keep talking when, when the train goes by. So in terms of, in terms of our variances, these are our C variances. I think for. I think for, for our two C variances, for front setback and for building coverage, building coverage is certainly a C1 variance, it's driven by the small size of the lot, seminal cases Lang v. North Caldwell, and I only cite cases in terms of, they provide the roadmap for the board in terms of what is sustained in terms of a grant of a variance, and Lang v. North Caldwell, again, it says that an improvement for an applicant, even though your lot is strange or undersized or oddly shaped, your improvement can be a normal size and shape, and I think that this is a modest house that is designed appropriately to fit into the neighborhood and would certainly meet that standard, in terms of our front setback, I think that's a C2 variance, where the benefit outweighs any detriment, again, we're fitting into the harmony of the neighborhood, Kaufman v. Warren is that, is that case, where it specifically said, providing for a variance that fits the new property or the new improvement into the neighborhood is certainly supported in terms of the planning for, for the grant of that variance, so we think, again, by providing for the home with the design modifications that have been made, to be much more compatible with the neighborhood, that we're certainly advancing those, those elements, certainly we need to advance some of the purposes of municipal land use law with either our C2, our C variances, in this instance, I think providing G, providing sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses in accordance to their environmental requirements, and I promoting a desirable visual environment through good civic design and arrangement, I think both of those are being advanced here, it certainly is, is an appropriate location for a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood, the neighborhood is actually lovely, and more investments in the neighborhood is only going to continue to elevate the standard here in North Asprey Park, and then finally, with all your variances, you know, we do have negative criteria, we can't have a substantial detriment to public good, we can't have any substantial impairment to your own plan or your master plan, so in this instance, we're not having any detriment to our public good, we're fitting the, the design into the character of the neighborhood, we're not a noxious use, we're a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood, we're exactly what's supposed to be there, it is a modest proposal, that is appropriately cited on this modest lot, and it will be an asset to the neighborhood, our lighting, our stormwater, all those things are controlled appropriately, lighting is minimal, stormwater flowing to the right of ways and away from our neighbors, in terms of our master plan, not having impairment, we believe we're advancing some of your planning goals to enhance the quality enjoyment of the city's residential neighborhoods, that promotes quality of life and minimizes negative impacts on the city's tourism and other economic activities, so again, we have an investment in the neighborhood that's going to contribute to the quality of that neighborhood, we have land use objectives we're advancing, are to maintain and enhance the character of these single-family neighborhoods, and to support and reinforce these uses, to protect and preserve established residential character, and I believe, again, we're doing all those things mainly through listening to the board and taking your advice in terms of what the appropriate character for that neighborhood would be, I talked about the design exception in terms of that it would be impractical to try and fit 36 feet of parking into that, into that dimension, and we think the board has the, so for those reasons, I believe the board has the ability to grant the relief requested, without a few questions.
Oh, I have the direct testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch, thank you, Mr. Tykenet, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Tykenet's planning report?
No.
Board professionals? Does anybody in the public have any questions? Okay, thank you. So at this point, we'll move to comments by the public, so I'll open it up, for general comment by anybody in the public, please go to the mic, state either whether you're for or against this application and your reasons why, and you have four minutes to make your statement, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Spencer Pelles, I live at 1018 Fifth Avenue, I also, I'm son of the neighboring house, 1016 Fifth Avenue, I owned that house with my brother, I think the most concerns came down to the intrusiveness of the house, you know, I mean, the plan that I saw was three feet off the property line, so...
You gotta be sworn in, I can't see you.
Sure.
Please raise your right, I'm sorry, it's my error, Salmonsware Firm, testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Sorry for that, thank you.
Retake.
Starting this out.
Start again, no, I'm only kidding.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I'm happy to see that it was 17 feet, it's much more reasonable than three feet off the back property line, and thank you for directing all water away from my basement that almost flooded once at the Asprey Park flood, so appreciate that, but I guess the more concern was a bit of the privacy aspect too, just having another two-and-a-half story home back-to-back that close to each other, I don't know what a conclusion would be for it, but it was just kind of a concern, I'm not sure if it's standard practice in our neighborhoods to have the houses that close to each other, you know, I mean, we have tenants that live upstairs, we have windows that face, like our shower faces the same direction, which, I know you can get blinds and everything, but just, you know, a matter of, if we're out in the backyard, like, you know, neighbor staring down, looking at you and stuff like that.
You can make your comments, but we're not going to comment.
My first, my first town meeting, if you couldn't tell, yeah, that's everything, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Salmonsware Firm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Fowler, I live at 1018 Fifth Avenue as well, then, north to the property, one of the comments I wanted to say is I really appreciate that the board took the variances into consideration and came to a reasonable conclusion, I think that the proposed plans that have been changed from the originals do match the aesthetic of the town compared to the, the first one, I do agree with the privacy fence when it comes to the front of the property, if that could be taken into consideration as well, I think that that would be fantastic, but other than that, I think that this makes a lot more sense for the block, especially taking into consideration the property to the south and to the west as kind of like a model of what this part of Comstock looks like, so.
Can you please just clarify what you mean by the fence?
Oh, sorry, the four-foot, the four-foot fence.
You're talking about in the front of the house?
Are you for that or against that?
No, I, I agree with you guys saying that, like, having the four-foot fence on the frontage of the property
Yeah.
may make it look a little closed off, that's one of my concerns, especially if it's going to be like a vinyl four-foot fence like that, because if you go to the next block north, closer to the school, I cannot recall any of the properties that do look similar, single or multifamily, having that sort of fencing, so it would stick out a little bit like a sore thumb, but I did want to raise that as well.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public for comment, either for or against this application? Alright, I'll close public session, public comment session, and come back to you, Mr. Hirsch, do you have any?
You need a motion for that.
I make a motion to close public comment?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes.
So do you have any final comments, Mr. Hirsch?
Well, I think we've tried to do everything the board, that we could, that the board asked us to do at the prior hearing, we did away with the design violations under the ordinance, we came up, I think, with the architectural design that is consistent with the neighborhood, and the front porch and the various other elements, I won't go through them all, you've heard the testimony, I'm not gonna repeat all the testimony, but I think we've hit on all of those, we've given substantial reasons for the variances, the two variances really, front setback, building coverage, when you have a lot this size, it's quite a task to come in with only two of those kinds of variances to get a single-family home on those lots, so I think, you know, the planners, the engineer, the architect have done a good job in, in trying to do, come up with the best possible plan for this size lot, and without creating any substantial detriment to the surrounding property whatsoever, so we think we've covered all of that, I think there's been an issue raised about the fence along the front, I don't have my client here, unfortunately, but they wanted the fence, if the board feels they don't want to approve with the fence, that's up to the board's discretion, you've heard the planner, he thinks it's consistent with the fencing down from the other property, he doesn't think it's out of place, I'll just leave it up, I'll leave it up to the board, I mean, I don't have the authority to tell you my client wants to remove the fence, he obviously wanted that fence for his, whatever aesthetic reasons he had, other than that, I don't think there's any other issues or disagreement, if I'm missing any, you can tell me, but I don't believe so, I think we've complied with every other element that we could possibly comply with, he said we will have a discussion with JCPN to do the best we can, so with that, I think we've carried our burdens of proof to have this application approved, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch, alright, we'll go to board deliberation, does anybody want to make any comments on the board?
I just wanna thank you and your professionals and your applicant for listening...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanna thank you and your board, and your professionals and the applicant for listening to the board's concerns, sometimes it can be a little overwhelming, but I think in the end, the product that you've shown us here today is a better product for the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would have to agree, I really appreciate the quick turnaround you guys did, and you really, you did listen and you incorporated very important elements, and I really, really appreciate that, I don't have any issues from a zoning perspective, you know, personally, I don't understand some design elements of this home and why there are no, I mean, there's, there's no cupboard space downstairs, there's no place to put anything, I don't, it's a beautiful home and it's actually really well-designed, the bedrooms are well-designed, the bathrooms are well-designed, but there's no service area, there's no place to put anything in the kitchen, there's no down, you know, there's no back of house, and I just don't see how a five-bedroom home with potentially this number of people living in here is gonna be able to live in here comfortably, it looks like a short-term rental property to me, or it looks like barely a weekend home, so I'm concerned that the interior of the house is not going to create another resident or another neighbor for me, because I live a block away, I don't think it is, it's not designed that way, I'm not gonna deny this application based on that, but I do have concerns.
Thanks for your, your comments and your concerns, the architects here is really, see, internally, anything can be changed.
It's not designed to live in as a five-bedroom home, it's designed as a weekend or short-term rental is really what it says to me, design-wise.
I don't think that was the intent of the developer, but I understand your point.
It may not be the intent, but it is, it is not designed for people to live in, there's, there's just no place, where are you putting a boogie board?
I don't, I don't know.
I can't answer any of those.
I, I do appreciate the changes that were made, and I am, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
So I, I will also lend my approval of the design changes that you guys have made, you did listen to us about the front of the house, specifically my concern about the front porch, I think it does have a lot more desirability for the neighborhood, I think it does match the other homes and make it look to be more part of the neighborhood as something, rather than something that stands out, so I am in favor of the application, although I am not in favor of the fence in front of the house, it, I think it rings as something closed off, and our homes are not like that at all, our homes are welcoming to the public and to people in general, and having a fence in the front, I think signals the wrong thing, so that's my opinion.
Okay.
But otherwise, I'm very pleased with the changes.
Thank you, Chair.
I'd like to echo what everybody said, I thank you for hearing us making those changes, it was really important that those be done, because that original application or drawing was not indicative of the neighborhood, so thank you, this looks wonderful, to Russell's point, I agree on that, to Chris's point, and to myself and Danny's original point about the fence, feel it's unnecessary, it's just not, it doesn't serve a purpose other than to prohibit something, and our town is a walkable town, where we like our neighbors to pop by and say hey, and the fence prohibits that, that's the hiccup for me.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board would like to make further comment?
Oh, I think the design is fine, and I go along with everybody else in reference to the fence not being in the front, you know, it's just, it's too inclusive, so just if we have, keep the fence out, I have no problem with it.
Okay. Any other comments? Already done?
I'll, I'll comment, I appreciate all the changes, I echo the same thing my colleagues do, however, I kinda disagree on the fence, if a person was living, you know, had a dog, you closed off the back, you have an enclosed yard, as it is laid out now, it's not enclosed, it couldn't contain a dog, because I did the same thing with mine, so, I understand the need for fences sometimes, but this, I don't think it serves a purpose, because it's not closed yet.
Okay, well, having heard the board's comments, even though there's no variance required related to the fence, I would indicate to the board, I will represent to the client that they should redo, remove the fence from the application, alright?
Well, you appreciate that, Mr. Hirsch.
And if, I'll leave it to the client to, in the future, if he wants a fence, to come back for, for an amendment, to ask for a fence to be approved, because actually, the fence could be built without a permit.
He wouldn't have, the fence complies, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the fence complies.
We were trying to address variances, you know, it's one of those feel things, I understand, it's not, you know, that's my field, is variances, not feelings, but I do appreciate all the comments, we've tried to work with you and I think you've worked with us, thank you.
So, based on the board comments, I'll make a recommendation to approve 1206 Comstock Street?
With, are we withing anything with this?
Well, there's usually any outstanding conditions of the reports that have to be complied with, that's in there, wheel stops will be installed at the end of the driveway per Domir's request, and the engineers comment, revise the plan to add a concrete pad at the side entrance, that's gonna be approximately, it's gonna go to the driveway, approximately five feet in width by five feet in length, applicant will contact JCPN, work together, to relocate the overhead, any overhead wires underground or in relocation, front eaves are gonna be extended per the architect's testimony, about 16 inches from the exterior, and whether or not there's going to be a fence is up to you.
Well, I think, Mr. Hirsch, you, you'll agree to have a conversation with your applicant?
Yes, with a recommendation.
To eliminate the fence in the front.
Okay, well then, that's a condition of removal, that's a condition of approval. Can I ask for one clarification? I've never seen this before, there was an element in plan's report about street trees?
Ah.
And it says, one for every 50 feet is required, we have two, but we have to now make a contribution, even though we have two, so, in other words, because we don't have to put new one in, because we have more than enough, but we have to make a contribution, I've just never seen that before. It's a new one to me, we need one, we have to make a contribution anyway.
There might be one in front of their property.
If you choose not to put a tree...
That's 3.10 on your report.
Isn't the one coming out because it's where the driveway is? Or are you able to get it in?
I don't, the way I read the report is, you know, that it requires one, we have two, it didn't indicate about anything being removed, I'm not clear that...
Yeah, no, but the ordinance is a...
It's being removed, I understand.
No, 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 the ordinance does say they want a contribution for every development application.
Even if we have street trees?
Yeah, because sometimes they don't live.
Some things you have to live with, Mr. Hirsch.
These aren't new street trees, these are established street trees, okay, anyway, I just wanted to clarify, if that's a requirement, obviously, we'll comply.
So, do we have a second?
A second. A second.
Based on the conditions Jack mentioned?
Correct.
And the street tree contribution.
And the street tree contribution, yes.
Great, you're up.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Natalie Passerini.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully.
Yes.
Chairman Avelloni.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch.
Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great holidays.
Happy holidays. And I make a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
Second by all in favor?
I will now take the roll call. Wendy Glassman is absent. Daniel Harris is present. Russell Lewis.
Is recused from this application.
Recused. Natalie Passerini is here. Jill Potter.
Is recused from this application.
Tim Slick.
Is recused from this application.
Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Avelloni.
Here. Mr. Steinberg, welcome. It's been a long time since we've seen you.
On May 4th.
Please, Jack.
We have four members aboard, that's a core, not four, it's seven. Application can proceed to the applicant.
Are all notices good?
All the notices are good. Require affirmative vote of three out of four members for the variance relief requested and design exceptions, if any. I reviewed the notices, they're in proper form, and we have jurisdiction to proceed.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Mark Steinberg, on behalf of the applicant, and the property owner sitting next to me is Peter Lammers.
Welcome.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it might be confusing. It's Henry Peter in the application. I can apply my middle name.
Okay. This application has been fulminating for about a year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's a long time.
Yeah, it's got a 23-gate.
Yeah.
Is there any particular reason why it's been so?
Peter and his husband do not live in the property only in summer.
Correct. We live in Florida from November to now.
So there was problems in, not in communicating, but in getting things together. And Michelle Alonso worked with us substantially and we got everything in order so that we can make the application. Peter and Gary, Gary met with her and myself and went over everything that was required and what other items she wanted to complete the application. But it took us a while.
Okay.
The situation is basically that the property exists in its current state and it's completed. We're not asking for anything addition.
So you're asking for forgiveness. Is that correct, Mr. Steinberg?
Somewhat, yes. Yeah, somewhat. There's no question about it. Now, we have a situation here tonight and we planned tonight's hearing about two or three months in advance so that Peter could fly up for the hearing. Not knowing that we only have four members here.
Honestly, I didn't know that was gonna happen myself, Mr. Steinberg. So please don't take it as.
No, I understand.
Something that was planned ahead of time.
Of course not.
I didn't know this myself until tonight.
Yeah, of course not. And I've been to, you know, I do other, many other towns and it happens. And I just was commenting that I was in Eaton Town.
But you're more than welcome to carry this to another date and to wait for a fifth person if you would like to, because.
I know, I understand that interruption can be given to us. I've discussed this with Peter and we would like to proceed tonight as far as we can get and then make a decision whether or not we would then adjourn it and wait for the fifth member to be qualified for this hearing and we would probably not come back till the spring. I know.
Well, it must be nice to have two houses.
I'm happy to fly back out for sure, but there's purpose to check on homes.
But, you know, I have an issue also because I am leaving for the, between now and the end of April.
I mean, I'm the only one staying.
We don't care about lawyers.
You can adjourn this to Fort Myers if you deter.
But let's, let's see what we can get at this point. We, we have attempted to give all the information to Michelle and prepare a package and tell you what the problem is. So if we could swear in, Mr. Lammers.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You saw him swear affirm at the testimony about to give this marriage. Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Henry Peter Lammers, L-A-M-M-E-R-S, preferred name.
Before we do that, we would like to mark some exhibits. I don't know if the board has the, included in the package. Do you have it in the color and the size and you're okay with this?
I believe so.
Anybody else needs more? You're good? Okay, so I will, let's, we can.
Make it A1.
Yeah, we're gonna mark the survey as A1. That's a survey prepared by Lakeland Surveying dated January 5th, 2024, which shows all of these elevations and setbacks of the property as well as the property numbers, number one. A2, this was a package that the applicants prepared in conjunction with requirements of Michelle Alonso as to each of the variances requested and corresponding pictures to advise the board. Does the board have this package also?
Yes.
Yes. I know we submitted six or eight, but you never know what they got. So if we can mark that as A2. And I don't know if the board has this. I know that the planner has it. These are the, there was a question after the application was made in, after your planner and engineer reviewed and prepared reports for this evening, whether or not the artificial turf is permissible.
I think that's been disputed this way and that way.
No, there's been a determination.
Soon as I swear in.
Okay.
Donna will.
But I do have the specs if the board would like to see them.
Sure.
Okay, so if we can, Mark, let's, we have both laboratory test report and the specs. So if you want to mark them together from the same company as A3, it would be fine.
You guys have it, but I don't think the board has.
No, we don't have it.
This is Lammers.
Any questions? Is someone swearing my staff? Andrew saw him swear affirm.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jerry Frieda, board engineer.
So before we start getting into the real need of this application and what variances are being required now, I'd like to understand how we got here, Mr. Lammers.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna do.
Normally, you know, this process is not the way it's being handled right now. Do you understand that?
I do understand that. I've had other building projects and I was in other states and surprised, unfortunately, when Mary Ann came, when we thought we were following the process, violating all the permits and unpleasant surprises.
So you're saying you weren't aware that you were violating ordinances?
Absolutely not. Absolutely. As, as part of your package, you will see that the applicants, my clients, have applied for a zoning permit and received that from Mr. Siegel on June 4th, 2021 for the project. And they subsequently requested the same again from the Mary Ann.
Guleta.
Guleta.
She's no longer the zoning officer.
And she issued all the permits. And then construction began. And some of it was when the homeowners were home and some of it was when they were not.
But that's not an excuse, Mr. Steinberg.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's an excuse. I'm indicating that you asked how this happened. And we've gotta explain to you how, how it occurred. And I know, and I understand it's not fair to the city.
No.
Something like this happens, it gets constructed.
Actually, it's not fair to the zoning board.
The zoning board is part of the city.
Not really. We're volunteers, Mr. Steinberg. And yes, we, we act on behalf of the city, but we're volunteers and we're your neighbors too, Mr. Lammers.
I realize this is not a good use of your time.
And unfortunately, my opinion is it's, it's difficult to sit here and have to say now, okay, you've done this, now what?
I totally understand. And, and it's, it's a situation that came about that was not anticipated.
Okay.
It was wrong. It should have been better supervised and it should have been as it proceeded.
But if you're sitting in my seat, how would you view it, Mr. Steinberg?
I have sat in your seat and as the board attorney for several other boards and.
I know you have.
And, and when people come for forgiveness after the fact, it makes it very difficult for the board two ways. Whether or not to deny them, which causes a crisis because everything is done, rip out type things. And then the other hand, why should you give somebody approval when they have violated the ordinances without coming back and asking permission to do so? It's a double-edged sword and it's a very difficult decision for you. I understand that 200%. Unfortunately, we're here because after construction was concluded and Mary Ann came back and went over everything. She found out that there was a lot of variances created by the construction that were not anticipated.
Because it was not being watched by the applicant or by the.
I have to ask Peter what, what occurred.
Let him explain. I wasn't there, so he was. They came to me after the fact also.
Correct. So the contractors, Pool Town Contractor that did the Hardscape Celtic Concepts, when we were working through Celtic Concepts in particular, the plans that we assumed that were submitted and the conversations that we had with them particularly related to the retaining wall and the placement of the fence, we were, we thought we were completely clear. We understood that there was a height restriction, a setback restriction.
What made you think that?
They told us.
Who told you?
The Celtic Concepts and the.
Do you have that in record?
No, you don't.
Can you produce somebody from your construction group that would testify on your behalf?
I can try to ask Mark Napolitano to show up.
Can't go too far. Can't go too far on that line of question.
Okay.
Because then we'll get possibly evidence in purchase against the applicant versus the variances that we're looking for.
Okay.
But I, we have no.
I understand, but we're all, we, all of us are experienced. Mark and I have been at this for 45, almost 50 years. So we've been around this thing for a while. I get this kind of stuff happens, I understand. So I just want to make sure we don't get too far afield in enforcement.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't understand his answer, so maybe.
Well, we're gonna get an answer. I'm allowing him to answer his answer and I want him to answer the questions with the chair.
Entitled to. When you said that they told you there was setback requests, what do you mean?
So the placement of the retaining wall and how far it needed to be off the side jaw or off the placement. They did not inform us about the placement of the aluminum fence being an additional five feet off. All the conversations that we had with Celtic Concept and the design that we assumed was, was presented was the retaining wall with the, with the fence directly behind it as well as the heights. So with the permits being submitted as we assumed, and I'm not an expert looking at plans, so I'm not trying to absolve my responsibility in this. But when I looked at the plans that were submitted, I assumed that that was discussed with the contract, by the contractor with the appropriate people in the city and that we were following the plan.
Please, Donna.
So we have, we have a lot of things associated with this. And I believe in your packet, you have copies of the zoning permits that were issued because they're part of the application materials we received.
That's what I was discussing before.
The only thing we don't have are the actual drawings that were associated with these permits. I'm not sure what happened there. So, and I know I've called out some stuff in my report that seems like, I'm sure you guys are blindsided. Like the thing about the separation of the fence from the retaining wall. I hate that one. When we did the zoning amendments, I had argued strenuously against that one, but it stayed in. But that's kind of like an arcane thing in the code that not many people know about and can see. But in these, in the application documents, there's nothing about the outdoor kitchen. There's some very clear, you know, specifications about the distance for the pool equipment and the lighting and the height of the accessory structure. So I want to, I think maybe some of the things that may be more important to the board are location of the shed, location of the pool equipment, the height of the screen wall, you know, the patio limit. Those are the things that were really part of your pool application and were in the scope of your permits. So how did we get so far afield from, from what's in the permits? You know, we can deal with things like the arcane crap, you know, with the fencing and the retaining walls.
I understand and I agree, Donna. I just need to understand where, how we got here.
Yeah, how did we get the screen wall? How did we get the outdoor kitchen? How did we get the patio? How did we get the pool equipment?
Provided, how did this occur?
I guess my question is, so you just said that you saw plans from your Hardscape and your pool people.
Correct.
What you saw on those plans is not what you have in real life on your, on your properties, what you're saying?
We made revisions and we, again, because we were pulling, they were pulling permits. We asked the applicant for, for the permits. We were making revisions to the plans and stupidly assuming that this was going forward to Mary Ann.
Well, so why, why did you have a permit from Mark and then a permit from Mary Ann? Was there substantial change between what had been originally?
We, when we added the screen.
Okay.
Celtic Concept was the designer for that. They weren't the executor for that. We, they were acting as our agent to submit these revisions to the plan because there's so many revisions to this plan because originally we even had an outdoor wet room and we took that off because it was just too expensive to do a sewer hookup. So everything, there was probably six revisions to this plan.
We love what that happens.
Yeah, I know. Well, we didn't need it because we went in with a assumption that this was.
Okay, so there were changes that.
There were changes.
That required you to actually amend your permit and that's why we have two separate permits under the two different zoning officers.
That's true.
Okay. And then when Mary Ann, Mary Ann came out to do her compliance inspection, she discovered the additional work or the, you know, deviations from the, from the permit specs. And that's how you got to here.
But weren't there updates to the construction department throughout this process, Mr. Lammers?
My assumption was there was because we were having permits pulled and I know only from the perspective of the inspectors.
So you were not involved though through this process at all?
I was not involved in the submission of the permits, no, or the submission.
And he was, whoever the construction, head of this construction group was not keeping you updated about what he was doing.
That is correct because I had, with these revisions to plans, or I was assuming that these were.
So you just assumed all along that he was doing everything right?
As the licensed contractor, yes. I mean, I acted in good faith with, as an experienced contractor in the area of Celtic Concept. That's why we did it with them, someone that had familiarity with Asbury because we're not full-time residents nor do we.
Because I take no pleasure in telling you you have to move things and you have to change. I really don't, Mr. Lammers. That is not why I sit here. I, I certainly don't want to make you torture you and your, your husband over a situation that you're saying you had no control over. But, and, and that's not the intention of why I do this job at all.
I understand.
Can I speak first?
Go ahead.
Personally, there are not enough people here to testify. And I have a problem with us going forward with this because obviously you didn't know what was going on, what was going on. And now you're expected to get. and now you're expected to get, let me finish. Now you're expected to give us testimony as to why it went on and I don't feel comfortable with your testimony. I would prefer to have the people here who made the decisions on your behalf. Because the onus does fall on you. Ignorance of what's happening is not an excuse. But I would prefer to have the people who made these decisions, who went forth with all this work here to testify as to why they did it.
We can try to get them here.
And I don't feel good going forward tonight saying, well, we're just gonna rush through this tonight just to get it done. No, bring all the people involved here and then I, no, I'm still talking. And then we can proceed to do this correctly. I mean, you already did it any kind of way. I don't want to go forth with this, with this proceeding any kind of way. Okay? You can come back and forth miles later, but get all your ducks lined up so that we can do this correctly. That's my feeling.
It may be very difficult to get the contractor back.
I'm not worried about how difficult it is. You have to get it done.
Time now, time now. We're zoning, not, remember that we've had this discussion in the past and I understand it's very difficult. I don't envy any of you sitting here. However, our task is not to decide who's right or who's wrong with how it got here. Our task, that's the, that's the municipal court's job. Are you in municipal court on violations?
No.
So the city has not seen fit to file complaints against the
There are, there, there have been no lay complaints, okay, from any of the neighbors or anything like that.
How about the city of zoning?
And when we had spoken to Mary Ann, she said nobody was pursuing the, any complaints. She wasn't planning to do so as long as we started the filing process, which we did.
Okay, I get it. Typically, the typical scenario with this type of thing, which unfortunately we have seen, seems to be more frequently as the years go by.
It's way too frequent, Mr. Serpico.
What happens is they go to, stop order is issued, summons is issued, you go to municipal court. Municipal court judge typically has said historically, go, we're gonna hold this in advantage. You go apply to the zoning board. If the zoning board turns you down, then we'll deal with it. If the zoning board approves it, we'll dismiss it because no harm, no foul. But in this set of circumstances, you've got a situation where it hasn't proceeded here. But it's not our, we do not have the jurisdiction and the power to decide how it got here, why it got here. Obviously, our power is have they sustained their burden of proof for the variances. And if the answer is no, as painful as it might be, then it's no. And then if it's been built, it's either a tear out, an appeal or whatever it is, but you'll do, you'll apply the proofs as you see fit as zoning, as the zoning. But we're not the enforcement agency. If the city chose, chose to not enforce the violations or do anything about the violations, that's another department's responsibility. It's not ours. We don't have the power to do that. That will be the zoning officer and the administration. What I, I think you were going before, Christopher, the line of questioning was, okay. I understand one of the things you certainly want to find is how does this happen and how can we prevent this from occurring? Where we seem to see it more frequently, I wonder. And I think that it's, there's somewhere along the line in the inspection process, maybe there's too long a gap between making an application, construction that started, if they're, if they don't, they don't wait till the end, they go out there and they say, wait a second, I'll use their fence. This fence is, this is not what's on this plan. You stop right then and there. You don't go and complete, you don't, you don't complete the job. You can't complete the fence until you either move it or you go to zoning board, you're there. How it gets to where it's complete, everything's
It's completed.
That's where it runs in, that's where you are put in that horrible position with Mark technologies because he's been our land use attorney for many, many years.
Stop the many, many, it's okay.
Well, no. Look, I've been at it for 47 and you admitted two or three before me.
I've been here pretty long too, so Mr.
I get it, you know, and
No, it was all 10 years ago. Just stop.
So whatever it is, you know, and somehow or other, we've got
No, it's true, it's true. And having been in the zoning office this spring and summer, filling in after Mary Ann left, you know, that, that office is very shorthanded. Mary Ann could not, you know, interim inspect every single permit
Okay.
as, as things went on.
But I don't want to put blame anywhere. I just want to say, how did we get here and now what? Now what? That's what I
So yeah, so we have to find out. Why can't you make the screen wall comply in height? Why can't you move the
Legally, you have to apply the principles that you apply, right or wrong. I mean, positive feelings, negative feelings, however you feel personally somewhat is irrelevant. But if there's a harsh task to be had here, then that's what's gonna happen.
And I take no pleasure in any of it. No.
No, I don't envy.
No, I would much rather have come here the way the last applicant did, with a blank, blank sheet of paper, tell you what we want and we hear, move this, move that, move that. Unfortunately, we have to work with what had occurred here. I, and of course, we need to actually prove that these variances meet the criteria of the law. At which point, at the next hearing, we will have a planner give you all that information and, and her opinion. And
In a positive aspect, your construction is done.
Well, maybe. Yes.
So you're in, caught between a rock and a hard place. Both sides are caught between a rock and a hard place.
I understand.
Again.
If I may speak, I was shocked when Mary Ann, because I was like trying to close out all these things and have her come onto the property. She was delightful, you know, looking around and she's literally not paraphrasing. She said, first of all, this is gorgeous and there's issues. And both, and myself, our faces just dropped because it's like, I thought we literally were making sure all the permits were getting pulled. I was making sure that the inspections were scheduled because somebody had to be at the house. And then hearing things like your wall's too high or that's not compliant, I'm not trying to be dramatic. I knew like devastated because there was a lot of time effort. I know that's not the board's problem, but it is what it is.
So should we itemize and go one by one and
However best to proceed. I, I, I'm open.
Yeah, I, I, here's some negativity from the board. And, you know, I, at this point, we can do that, you know, we would appreciate that. But I think that we would prefer a larger number of board members to make the final determinations. Looking for more than four.
Well, I, I appreciate that as well.
So, but let's see how far we can get tonight on these issues.
Yeah, we, you may be able to put yourself in a better position in front of additional members if you get some feedback on these
Absolutely.
These deviation.
Absolutely. Let's, let's start backwards though. Tell us about your findings on the permeable coverage.
Because that was Gosh, I was saving that for the icing.
Pardon me?
Thought that was gonna be the icing to make everything better, the dessert at the end.
No, because I got a call from Michelle and she said, oh, you need another variance. I said, well, Michelle, we said half the $400 worth of notices yesterday. When are you waiting to tell me? Okay, because we had met with her several times and she had all this information.
You know, it's a really nicely done artificial turf. I mean, it has the same problems they all
As fake grass goes.
Is on the edges, you know, the weeds are starting to move in. And so the entire property is basically artificial turf. And nobody noticed until I was out there.
Even the right of way?
Hey, that grass was exceptional for November.
No, the right of way is natural.
Yeah, the right of way.
Okay, so it's not completely
Small plant, but there's not grass. So the intent is not to have to cut grass, I'm sure.
So, so I immediately said, ah, somebody give me a spec. And, and kindly, Mr. Steinberg offered to tear it all out at first.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize what it cost them.
Yeah, so they did provide us with a spec. I shared that with Jerry and I think it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, the specification's fine. It would help if you could get pictures. If there were pictures taken during installation on anything, the retaining wall.
Yes, same there.
Okay, if you have those, that'd be helpful to the board because now we're looking back and we weren't able to do inspections when they were built. But the specification for the synthetic turf is fine. It meets all the standards.
The permeability of it is rated how?
It's, well, you know, they rate it by the gradation of the material underneath the turf. The turf lets water through.
Okay.
Right? It's like a thin little layer of ruck, for lack of a better term. And it sits on an embment of stone.
Right.
That stone, although it has to be compacted somewhat, is permeable and allows water to drain down. So
In the specification.
Yeah.
Not all of them do, which is what the problem happens in some of the other applications.
And sometimes there's a layer of silt or something no one knows about that's right there and it causes a problem down the road. But it appears that everything looks in order. It looks in good condition out there. We just can't tell you how it was installed because we don't know. But if you have pictures,
I will, I will
That would go a long way.
Find them and I can certainly have forever long the representatives try to come here to
So we're inclined to say that they probably don't have an impermeable coverage problem based on the material they've provided so far.
Okay.
One less variance.
Okay. You're getting there. It's a tedious process, but you'll make it.
Let's talk about the other ones.
So, and, and, all right, since we're kind of like, yeah, we'll kind of walk, walk the good stuff or whatever. The other thing I did cite was the separation distance between the retaining wall and the fencing. And I think this is an artifact in the code. You know, I don't remember it being in the original one that Dave and I worked on, but the you know, the building code says if you have a retaining wall of at least three feet, you need a railing, right? And that railing needs to be right behind the wall so that you don't go around it and fall off. So for some reason, in the zoning ordinance, we have this provision that says if you have a fence associated with the retaining wall, you need to have a five foot separation between them. And it defines the whole purpose.
We had this before.
Yeah. So, you know, I think technically, yes, they need the design exception. I completely support granting that because you know, the, the advancement of the zoning ordinance is that the physical condition is, you know, a public benefit. So, you know, as far as that one, I think that's also a, don't worry about it. It's fine. The wall survives if we grant that one.
That's 2.7 in your report.
2.7, yes. So then, as long as we're in fences and walls.
Donna, on the fence, so that screening that's in between it, is that a separate variance that they need?
So there technically is not a provision in the code about the, the screen mesh. And I've talked with Michelle about this too. So, you know, we, we have provisions in the code about not enclosing your front porch. You know, that's, that's not allowed. And the fence regulations call for an open fence. And that deals with the actual placement of the slats, you know, the physical construction of the fence. And this is a, you know, kind of a temporary measure that's added to the fence that makes it less open. But it's, you know, there's kind of a loophole in our code about that. And in fact, I believe Michelle had permitted you to have the mesh temporarily.
And we only have it for privacy because we're kind of
Well, but that's the whole point of requiring an open fence on, on a street frontage is we don't want you to have that much privacy.
And it does look like it, it's pretty, it's pretty closed off from these pictures.
So, you know, I'm not, I'm not giving, I'm not citing them as needing a relief for not having an open fence. They technically have an open fence. It's the aluminum packet. It is the right, you know, specification for the street frontages. It's just I guess in combination with the wall, it's too high. Yeah, in combination with the wall, it ends up being too high. But, you know, we're still calling it an open fence and the, the mesh is a temporary condition. It's not really governed by the ordinance.
You can prefer to take it down, we can take it down. We only put it up for privacy.
And your landscaping, once it kind of grows in, I think it has grown in some, I think you'll start to get the benefit of better screening there, but I know, corner lots are tough and, you know, that's your whole yard. That's but it's a double edged sword. You know, we expect yards to be semi-public on street frontages. Let's see. So, so
Give me the, the power of your hand, bro.
As you do it, okay?
Yes, on 2.6.
I got, okay.
Along the driveway and along the Drummond Avenue frontage gets over four feet. So that's so the question, I guess, well, yeah. So the problem is the lot
Slopes.
Slopes, you know, from Third as well as from Drummond and the yard area is set higher than the, what used to be the driveway or is the driveway basically on Drummond. So yeah, you know, you've used walls. We use walls all the time in our, in our yards in Esberry Park. A lot of lots are mounted up from the street, right? So it's the same kind of situation. And so the combination of the fence and the wall makes it too high.
Right, and we've had this before.
Yeah. So if you're on the inside of the fence, it feels normal, but when you're on the outside of the fence
It, it looks like a barricade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like a fortress.
So, you know, there may be a planning reason for that based on the existing property of the land, the configuration of the lot, the existing structures like the house, the driveway, the, uh, street elevation, which, you know, could you know, be a reason for that. But maybe also they could have a lower fence along the driveway because it's just on the inside of their property. Does it really need to be?
We'd have no problem with that.
Is that, is that, that's the only area where it exists?
Where it starts to come up Drummond or go south, you know, toward Third is where it gets, you know, tapers back down, but the worst part is closer to the driveway.
Do you think that causes any safety issues though? Because when you're from the inside having a lower fence, you are higher up from the driveway. I'd be hesitant to make that change for safety issues.
So that's, and so that's exactly the, the board has to consider. Is it better for it to be too high? Or if you cut it down, is it any kind of problem to make compliant? And then 2.5
But anything that, that, you know, is very high like that, Donna, gives you a sense of
Well, the worst part of it is in the driveway. So it's not on the street side. You know, it's not the actual public that's affected by it. It's them in their driveway. So that could be another, you know, mitigating factor.
I think the screening, the screening from my perspective makes it worse as well.
Okay.
Because we've had this before where it's been a solid fence on top of a wall.
Right.
Here we have an open fence on top of a wall. If it maybe did not have that screening, it might not be so imposing from the street side.
We're doing that.
Lucky. Ready to draw the lines on that?
Yeah.
In a long and light fashion.
So then
I mean, it'll be in material, but just for clarification, I do have pictures. There was an existing retaining wall at that driveway that was replaced. Full disclosure, it is higher because when the pool would have, they did regrade, but there was an existing retaining wall.
Yeah, you changed it all. Doesn't matter anymore. I mean, as long as we're all friends here.
Yeah, I know, I understood. I just
So 2.5 is the wall height exception. And this is the section that's on the interior lot side against the neighbor. And that's where they have their screen wall. And that's really high. So can you tell us what drove the decision making for that height? Is it absolutely necessary to be that height? Is there somewhere in between on that height?
This is, for my application, this is the wall that.
Do you have, oh, yeah.
Is this the wood wall?
Image.
Is this the wood wall on that?
Right, the privacy wall.
Well, it's not just the wood wall because it's also the clavard wall, the white wall, where the outdoor kitchen intersects with the wood wall and then wraps back toward the house. So if you're on the wood fence wall detail, is that sheet four of your supplement? Where it shows, there's a picture, you can see the side of the shed.
What pages? You have, they're on pages.
Yeah, page four.
Oh, I'm looking like that, okay. Yeah, that's, that's the wall.
Yeah, so there's the wood unfinished wall and then there's the white wall that has the fixtures on it and the clock. So the whole thing is too high.
The shed is not too. The shed setback is.
It's in the wrong place, but it's not too high.
Well, there wasn't, there was an existing foundation that, that, for a previous shed.
But didn't the permit say?
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay.
With the shed.
There you go. Just like your old retaining wall.
You got it.
No, no, I'm making it. Permit, it's on this one. Shutter would rather.
Outdoor shower. So where was the, is what number going to be?
Essentially where the pool equipment, next to the pool equipment. And the outdoor kitchen was going to be where the wood clavard. But with everything that turned around and one of the plan submissions, that was unfeasible because the sewer hook up was $40,000.
Yeah.
So we struck that from the plan. The purpose of the.
You couldn't get it to go to the house?
No, because the hook up's on the other side of the house.
Of course, of course.
We had asked to see if, if we could ask for an additional meter and that was also a request prohibited. So the, the wall height was purely a design factor to enclose the pool equipment, provide some sound barrier and some privacy from our neighbor that's right on top of us. There's no, nothing else that I can.
I can see them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the maximum permitted height for a wall on an interior side like that is six feet for a solid wall. So it's a, I'm sorry, is it a foot four? 7.4 feet.
So it's a foot point four. One foot, three inches or?
Sixteen inches.
Sixteen inches too high. You know, whether or not the reduction of that would hurt the neighbor.
So.
That's, that's something the board has to consider also, whether or not the adjacent neighbor wants to see more of everything that went on.
So, do you know the height of the boards or the clavards? Like, would it be, so is it two boards that are too high or is it more than two boards too high? Looking at the wall.
I'm not sure, but I know that. Kind of over the accuracy.
It just, you know, pictures worth a thousand dollars, you know, if you could really get a sense of what the difference is by.
To guess, but I, I'm pretty, I've known it yet.
Six, twelve, it might be two and a half or three boards. Difference in height, if you're looking at that page four, between the permitted height and what, what they have. Yeah, it's probably two and a half boards. And, and so is it? So why, why does it have to be that high? Because you're here, you're asking for the relief, so why does it have to be that high? Why can't it be compliant?
Well, physically, I assume it can be compliant, but then you're exposing another foot and a half to the adjacent neighbor and impeding on our privacy as well as their privacy next door so that they don't have a view of what's going on in the backyard. Now we can.
I love a show.
Pardon me? Pardon me?
People watching, it's a great activity.
It's something, but then we run into the enclosure next to it, which we, you said we wrapped around. The clock is. We could find out what the number of boards to be removed to be compliant.
Okay, and then, so then up at the top here, so now this is where we have the, the setback variances for the, for the structure. So the shed, the outdoor kitchen, the pool heater and the, and the patio. And I will suggest that I'm not terribly offended by the patio as being a horizontal, you know, horizontal surface level encroachment. I don't think that's tremendous harm, but the things like the pool here and the shed and the outdoor kitchen are, you know, more permanent vertical visual obstructions. They encourage people activity at them that is lingering, you know, that can be the nuisance to the neighbors. So, let's see.
Was the outdoor kitchen on the original plans?
It was not, it was submitted separately.
And why was that?
Why was that? Because the, the wet room that was referring to before, everything was getting reconfigured. And so we always wanted an outdoor kitchen. We were planning to have a grill and a sink. The sink is there for clarity, there's no hookup because we have no water or no sewer. We literally had to rejigger everything between Celtic Concepts and Kevin Hickey, who was the contractor that was actually doing the wall work and the, the kitchen work. I have no excuse of why it wasn't submitted and clarified. I do recall Mary Ann saying, there's a permit for an outdoor kitchen, is that still a progression? There was at least some record of that at some, some point in time. It's embarrassing.
So the kitchen element might almost be considered a de minimis deviation. It needs to be three feet away, it's 2.8. So it's inches.
Right.
Out. And again, being a only like three or four foot high element, maybe it's not too offensive, being a few inches off. I think the bigger deal is unfortunately the shed.
Shed.
Because that is much closer and much larger and.
How tall is, how tall is the roof line on the shed?
Ten foot.
Ten foot. The wood fence, how, how high was that? That was 74 inches?
Seven.
Or 7.4, 7.4 feet? So it extends approximately three feet over that. So the, so your neighbor's just staring at the back of the shed.
It's a wall or a wall that they're looking at. And then the pool heater again.
That enclosure of, of the pool equipment is outstanding. It's, it's, I can only say hot, it's so tall.
It literally was just for containment and for privacy.
I, I, I understand the purpose, I really do. It's just.
It's all very lovely, but.
It's overwhelming. It, it's, it really is.
And then I just want to clarify, in my report, it says three feet to a property line, but it's really five feet. So that is a foot and a half too close.
This is the shed.
The pool, the pool equipment.
The pool.
Pool heater.
Yeah, I assume the cost of moving all that is quite expensive, but cutting down the enclosure may be something that we can. We'll see, I mean, we're gonna have to go back and see what, what, you know, we certainly can do some of this stuff.
Is, do you have, Mr. Lammers, in your mind, any remediation plan for us to look at or think about or?
No, we want to, we want to hear your comments and then when we come back, we will have submitted prior to what we choose to be the next hearing date revised proposed plans for approval, which, you know, we can hear you.
If you can, if you can render an opinion, if you feel you have enough data, that's one. If you feel you can, then the burden shifts to the applicant, yeah, to you.
We understand. We, we understand, but I mean, we just, you know, the wall, the pool, the equipment enclosure, maybe not the equipment itself.
I, I mean, there are certain things we can cope with and other things that.
We're gonna pay, we're gonna pay the price to, because it got done when it, which it happened. Okay, let's not rehash that one, but we're willing to certainly, before we even.
And let me be clear, we, we want to work with you, Mr. Lammers.
I appreciate that, and I'm sure he does. So we heard away those, those things.
I think as our, as our board planner had said, I understand the, the fence. I think if we can open the fence again, so we actually see that it's an open fence. I, I agree with the chairman that the, the enclosure around the pool equipment and the wood fence is high. And then I understand the pool equipment is the pool equipment. I totally get that, I went through that myself, so.
That's a mystery, I, because they, sorry, I don't mean.
But I think, I think that's, maybe there's something that you can do there as well. With, with the enclosures.
With the enclosures.
With, with the shed, I know we haven't talked a lot about the shed, but initially from the pictures, I do have concerns about the shed because of the height of it. We're talking a 10-foot structure close to the property line. Was that like a prefab or?
It was built on site.
It was actually built from the ground up?
It was, it was, well, I'm not clarifying, the Amish came and built it on site.
The Amish.
Similar company that I.
Oh my.
They actually built a very nice.
But they build a lot of barns.
But there was a.
There's another neighbor that built the same thing on their property too.
But there was a shed at that location on a prior pad.
Okay, he don't know the height.
We don't know, well, but what's your ordinance is the sheds?
I'm sorry, I just zoomed in very tight on sheet seven, looking at another view of the shed. You know, there's the wicked witches' legs sticking out over the shed.
That's a big fan of the.
Is it possible when you come back, can you get a picture of the shed from the perspective of your neighbor?
From the neighbor. Probably have, but you don't think I took one from the third avenue.
No, not with the shed, it's just the wall, yeah.
The east facing side of that.
So the. I have one.
Was any consideration given to your neighbors when they built the shed?
Pardon me?
Was any consideration given to your neighbors when the shed was built?
We just shared the plans with him, his name is Jim, I can't remember his last name. His only advice to us was, you're overspending on your property. And not trying to make light of it, that's literally what.
Yeah, he wasn't concerned with the location, the height of, of, of the structure. But we'll see what we can do with that. That may be a little harder and maybe we do have the copy of the survey showing where the, where the pad was located. You know, the original pad, which was in that location.
Mrs. Steinberg.
We'll take that into consideration, Mr. Steinberg. Like anything else.
What else?
Mrs. Steinberg, on, on real, everything is either, from what you have said, either more difficult or more expensive, yet it was initially done without permission. And I'm not here to stamp anything that was done without permission. I don't care.
We, we, we're gonna try to mitigate this as best as we can, keeping that in mind.
I just had a question, this, this picture right here, so your neighbor's house is sort of over here.
It's.
Right? And I know that's something.
Parallel to those wood frames.
So is there anything between the equipment and your neighbor's house?
There's not, there, well, sorry, there is, there's the open fence.
There's an open fence.
There's the open fence. But then they, they put in some metal bricks on their side of the fence.
Oh, God. So the way it is here, this noise is probably getting pushed towards your neighbors instead of towards your pool.
Yeah.
Probably, I mean, I haven't, Jim hasn't said anything to me about it, but yes, that's an actual segment. This is.
But was it in operation this past summer?
Yes.
And the summer before.
And the summer before. Although the wall wasn't done the summer before.
So everything on page eight has already been approved, places pool equipment and surrounding wall.
Can mitigate the height of that.
I think for me, just to go back to this picture, granted, I, I know you said your neighbor doesn't have a problem with it, but unfortunately, as we all know, the variances go with the land. So your neighbor might not always be your neighbor. So I understand that you put up the fences to block the view and maybe some of the noise. I think if you can consider maybe putting something there to block the view and the noise for your neighbor or future neighbors.
We'll use the extra material.
Recycle.
Turn it around a little bit and lower it.
You know, I can certainly appreciate that. I mean, and their commissioner units were always there and I'm sure they can do that as well, so.
So, yeah, we can put, make a true enclosure at, at a reasonable height.
Correct. Also, there's other forms of enclosure, I mean, you can use natural bushes other than vinyl or, or wood.
No, yeah. I like the landscaping idea, for sure.
It, it may not mitigate as much of the noise, but it, it probably, and these are just suggestions, Mr. Lammers.
The board is not committed to any approval. We, we want the chance to see what we can do to mitigate what's there for, for the board's application, so we could move more forward. Move forward, move forward with, with, with the application on some of the issues which are reasonable and some which we approve to you good and try to get as close to the ordinance requirements as possible.
I appreciate that.
We're not gonna do 100%, it's, it's very difficult, but we will have approvals for that for the remaining issues.
Was there any communication between Pool Town and Celtic Concept?
Yeah, they're gonna, pardon me? We're gonna go back to them.
You're gonna go back to them?
Well, I think you can go back to them and see what they can do.
Well, I, all I can get them to do is to testify, I mean, it's for Pool, in Pool Town's case, I know the plans for the placement for the equipment were submitted.
I, I don't want their testimony.
Yeah, I, no.
This isn't, that's not what we're here for.
Okay, sorry, I understand.
That's, that's gonna take us far afield of our.
I know, I need that from municipal court.
And I don't think they're gonna be here. What we want to do is go back to them and see what they can.
That's up to you.
To make it a little more compliant with what's required.
That's all.
The wall that you talked about, the wood wall, the enclosure, we'll take off the, the screening of the fence. Fence is kind of necessary because of where it's located with the driveway for safety, you know, and we'll pull that too, but we're gonna try to get as much compliant as possible. Any other areas you can suggest?
Donna, I'm not sure what else we can address.
And I want to make sure at the end, I want to hear from all of you that we're, you're the ones that tell us the issues that you're concerned about, that we need to know.
Yeah, exactly, like I pointed out, you know, is the thing that's 2.8 feet instead of three feet? How?
The, the kitchen, it should be not, not an issue, but because of its de minimis type of situation.
Right, right, okay.
So.
Yeah.
But I, I do have an issue with the height of that enclosure. I, I, I think it's horrible, horrible.
And the temporary mesh should really be.
And the temporary mesh has to go.
More temporary than, than it has been. Okay. Yes, okay. And, and we've heard two points of view about the combination fence wall height. Which way are we leaning there, the section along the driveway?
I understand the section along the driveway. I think if you were able to remove the mesh and turn it back to an open. I think if you were able to remove the mesh and turn it back to an open, I think it would be less imposing than it is now. So I'd like to see pictures of it without the mesh from Drummond and also from your driveway. I think that would, that would help.
Good.
Regarding the shed, if you could take those pictures from the perspective of your neighbor, I'm not sure what you can do with the shed, right? It was a built structure.
I think we eliminated the issue with the grass.
The ground.
That's what they call it. The plastic.
Donna, are they required to put street trees?
One of the reasons that the salt's expensive...
They're required to put street trees.
Is that they don't have any place for a lawnmower.
Well, yeah, but there's plenty of landscapers here.
That's just a reason...
Did you take down, remove any street trees when you did the construction?
No.
So there was never any along Third or...
There were never any on Drummond, and Third wasn't...
I think that for any development, there's supposed to be a tree. Is that correct, Donna?
Yeah, every development application, you're supposed to, you know, comply with the ordinance requirements.
They did plant some of those trees.
Drummond is a 15-foot right...
But it has to be on the right of way.
It's, yeah, I'm happy to contribute the right of way. The strip on Drummond is very narrow, but I'm happy to contribute and do whatever if they go there or not. Not sure that they're going to live.
Is it that tiny?
Yeah.
No, so Jerry and I, so Drummond is listed as a 15-foot right of way, but like there's really a very tight public improvement space, you know, there's the right of way...
Curve to curve is narrow.
Yeah, but like there's, between the curb and sidewalk is really narrow. So I'm wondering if it's offset and the other side has more, yeah.
There is room here to put in...
Yeah, but Third is fine. And we want you to take that gravel sort of access pad on Third.
Oh, take the walk gate or the...
It's a little access gate, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That should be restored to regular, you know, right of way, grass, whatever.
I'm sure. I wasn't sure which gravel pad you were referring to, so thank you for clarifying that.
It's on your plan.
You should do it.
There's no curb cut there. It's just gravel?
Yeah, they probably used it as an access to put the pool in.
Yeah, and they wanted something in case equipment would need to be brought into the lawn, because the only way to get up to the pool there is through the steps. And so just trying to think ahead, should anything need to get back there, they had some way to do it.
Have we covered every area that we...
That's important. That's important. I wasn't, yeah, I know it's gravel pattern, just not, I just wasn't...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When you're done, under the circumstances, the way this is going, there is a lady sitting right there has been patiently awaiting to say she's a neighbor. And I think we should hear her comments because it may have something to do with what you want them to do. Or you may give it a different slant. This way, we don't wait till spring and then have to go all the way back to the drawing board again.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind when you're all done, I'd like to get her...
Then if you're in agreement, Mr. Steinberg or Mr. Lammers?
Yeah, and this way, you'll save them time and effort too.
Absolutely.
All right. So please go to the microphone.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. And you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record. Spell it and give us your address.
My name's Amanda Brensinger, last name B-R-E-N-S-I-N-G-E-R. I live at 1611 Third Avenue. So if you're at their front door, I'm north of them essentially, or no, sorry, not north, east. So like across Drummond Avenue from them.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah, so from my back, we can see their property perfectly. I think, I don't take any offense to their property. I don't think it's an eyesore. Certainly, I understand that there's things like through the fence that don't fit with the rest of the aesthetic of Asbury Park, but they keep a warming team to property. I think it's beautiful. And it's a shame that, you know, they thought they were giving everything up to code or, you know, standard, but, you know, I guess those things fell through the cracks and I don't think they should be penalized too much for those things. Because I think the property is great. Like I said, they keep it well-maintained and it's not an eyesore.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's here for that?
All of them.
Okay. This way, no, and the idea is we're trying to see if we can do something constructive.
Right. I mean, she's just in favor of their application, so it really wasn't...
It's not matter whether you're for or against, but if you have something that, you know, like...
Is there something in particular that you don't like or wants changed?
Swear your question.
I'm going to swear in, just when you answer, when you speak. Please raise your right hand. Solemnly swear or affirm testimony about to give, this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record. Spell it and your address.
Sure. Peter Boulos, B-O-U-L-O-S. And I'm at 1705 Fourth Avenue, which is just around the corner.
Okay. All right, Peter, go ahead.
And so I just, you know, listening to everything, I mean, just overall comments, aesthetically, everything is beautiful and fits into the neighborhood. I think the one thing that, you know, I would, you know, argue against is any changes to that, you know, that shed structure. You know, it's perfectly suited, it's aesthetically beautiful. Understand the concerns with it being, you know, closer to the neighbor or, you know, the height concerns, but I think it fits the property and the neighborhood beautifully. And I don't think there should be any, you know, concerns with that in terms of the fencing and the driveway. I, you know, don't think it'll be a big deal either way if the mesh fabric comes off because the landscaping has grown in. But I do agree on the driveway side because of the height from the driveway retaining wall to the fence, that could definitely be a safety issue if that was changed. So those are my overall comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take that into consideration.
Yeah. All right, so...
I think we probably just got...
Yeah, unless you have any other concerns...
Sounds that you want us to address.
That you want, that you want to tell them, "Look, I don't like this, I don't like that, I don't like this fence, that fence." Anything you have uncovered, I want to make sure that your point of view and your concerns are totally conveyed, that they understand where you're coming from.
I just have a question about the runoff. During your report, you mentioned that you needed to confirm that the runoff wasn't...
Yeah, there's no sign, there's no sign of any runoff onto the neighbors' properties at all. There is some drainage that points out towards the street and probably eventually gets out into the street gutter, but it's minimal.
And you haven't had any water problems?
No. Excuse me.
So...
So I think we have gone as far as we can tonight. I would request that we carry this matter. And I was thinking of May, but I think we need to get back here and work on some of this stuff.
Yeah, we'll have to come up with some remediations, alternatives for the board.
Are you going to be able to do that before May?
But if you get on the plane, okay.
No, but at this point, there's nobody pushing this as long as it's being in front of the board. We're not in front of municipal court or anything like that.
No, and as long as you agree to the time.
No, no, I am going to address this. It's a special situation.
I have a time waiver.
This is a special situation.
Absolutely, give a time waiver. So maybe we should be shooting for June or July so that everything can be put into writing and presented a plan with remediation.
Actually, you're going to have to renotice.
I'm going to renotice.
You're going to have to renotice. You're going to have to get a new property owner's list because the one you have is going to be stale.
Of course.
So if you've got to renotice anyway, unless you're sure of your date, why not...
We don't necessarily have to give you a date.
Why not just carry it to an indeterminate date and then, but it has to be, you know, you can't let go here, let's go there.
Do you want to just wait till you get it all done then?
And then just...
It'll be during the summer.
Yeah, I'm not going to dismiss your application because you're additional cost to that, but we can retain jurisdiction, but you're going to have to let us know when you want to back. Renotice for what you have. You may change your variances around. Donna's got to do a report, Jerry's got to do a report. Whatever you submit may revise your variances as well. So your notice may, you know, so subsequently fill these roles.
So we would carry it without a date, no later than X amount of months from today.
Yeah, pick a date.
And we, upon that date, we would, upon obtaining that date, we would renotice. Obviously, the property owner's list will renotice.
Yeah, you'll renotice. And then you've got to do it in sufficient time for Donna and Jerry to get the reports done, so you don't run into...
Well, I want to submit the plans to them so that they can tell us what variances are still necessary. So when we get to notice, we don't have to call that, "Hey, you missed one."
No, no, I don't want to do that.
Chuck, I would just, instead of leaving it open-ended, as Mr. Steinberg said, like some timely plot on it, whether it's six months, seven months, eight months.
We'll know later then.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, I agree with you.
I think, when you come back in May usually?
Yeah.
So that would give you a month or two to get all this together. So maybe...
And for my clarification, to submit the proposed changes or have the proposed changes done or some...
No, I don't, no.
Give us a plan of the changes.
Okay, I just want to make clear.
We will submit a plan, for instance.
And those are the ones that you're committed to doing and...
And you would need...
Then we would update our report accordingly.
Right, you would need time...
Yeah, so we generally do...
You'll have that for the next meeting.
Like a month before the meeting date, so I really have to wait till May?
They're not going to do it.
They're not coming back until May.
Yeah, but they're not actually doing the, you're not doing the work. You're just submitting a plan, but you could do...
But he's going to have to speak to the contractors or whatnot.
Right, but you could do that remotely. I think to Donna's point, you're not, you don't physically need to be here at...
You want to carry it to May?
No, I want to carry it to February and get this taken care of or you say fly up.
Yeah, but I'm not flying.
I think May or June is reasonable.
See you guys.
I think it's reasonable as well, so...
What date is it? What do you want to hear this?
Let's pick a date in May. What is it, Marie?
We have a prospective calendar, correct?
Yes.
So this is, the official calendar has not yet been adopted until January, but assuming this is, we're going to have to give you the date in May, give them one of the two dates. And if there's a problem with that, we'll let you know. If for some reason the board says no to those dates next year in the May or January...
Oh, character, May X. Assuming they disagree to.
Changes, we'll let you know.
So two available options are May 13th or May 20th?
May 20th would be preferred, but...
I still want a renotice and I still want a new property owner's list.
Right. And we are, I'm going to submit a letter. The letter will contain that we are extending the time in which the board must make a decision to...
Decide the case under the MLU.
Right. Extend it without termination. If we don't get heard in May or whatnot.
Without termination or without prejudice that you'll get a, that you'll get an order by the proof.
Yeah, no, no, no.
The worst cuts my face. Yeah, I'm with you.
But we're going to extend the time.
Can we take five minutes, slide and go to the bathroom?
Yeah. I make the motion to take a five-minute recess.
We call the roll call.
Yes. Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Natalie Passerini. Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
Chairman Avaloni.
Here. All right, so Mr. Steinberg, I'm assuming you came up with a date that you would like...
Because we had to back it up to when we're going to submit amended plans. We would request that the matter be carried to June 24th, 2025.
Okay.
And I will submit a letter to that respect, assuming that that's the date that the board confirms, if not the next available date after that date.
I appreciate that.
And we will extend, you know, the time in which the board must make any type of decision without end, so that even if we don't hear, be heard that night or the board decides to carry...
And new notices will be done.
And we will renotice, get a new property owner's list sometime in April or May. And new notice. They're not getting the green cards this time.
That's okay. They don't need the green.
I know that, but as an attorney, I'd like to get somebody to sign, but at this point, it was certified mail is $9 and change.
Everything is expensive.
Especially lawyers.
All right, so I make a motion to carry 1103 Drummond to potentially, I'll say potentially, June 24th, 2025, based on our adoption of our new calendar in 2025.
Subject to renotice.
Subject to renotice.
A second.
Second to Tom Scully. Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Natalie Passerini.
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully.
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Yes, thank you. And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you for your attention. Hopefully we have more people.